I do have to cut it every day though.
It's boring. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and infinite.
All the roll, please. Mayor Bailey, here. Mr. Bateman.
Here.
Mr. Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ori.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Ping.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
So, uh, tonight, uh, we wanted to, uh, run through a presentation for the 2026 CIP. With, uh, we obviously, everybody knows the staff members that are here. I wanted to start by just simply sort of showing everybody sort of what goes into the, the formation of a... You gotta be kidding me.
Put it up there.
I know.
You want it on both?
No, it was my goal to get fancy. Okay. So, um, we sort of thought we would start with just sort of how does a, a CIP or capital improvement program come together? Well, and it, this is realistic, especially for a community like Loveland that did four master plans. It sort of starts with the public input, then it leads into the master plans. And then the two-year process that council goes through to create the, uh, council goals is something unique. And, uh, for those of us that have had a chance, an opportunity to participate, it is, uh... That really sets the framework. We take it serious. City staff takes it serious. We do updates and we move those along. From those, uh, council goals, we then try to create capital projects. There's some of those are, are operating project, but some of those are capital projects. From that, we try to create a five-year CIP. And then full circle, it comes back around where a city council then, uh, adopts our CIP. But the focus of the CIP is, uh, on the city council goals. So, um, this is, in our opinion, um, this is, th- those of us that, that participate in the 2026 CIP. And I only wish, I know city council sees it, but if the general public, we get to see all that goes into these kind of, uh... All that goes into not only creating the CIP, but everything that goes on through after the budget is, is finished. Uh, obviously, you have two police chiefs that don't, uh, sit here every day coming forward with a budget to, um... They would much rather give up a piece of equipment if they can do something more for training, something more for wellness. And they're always come with very reasonable requests and just, uh, and a lot of thought goes into those. Of course, the leader in all of this is our, our finance director, Mark. I have been here long enough that I saw a period of time where we went through, uh, six finance directors in seven years. And I can't tell you what it means to have the stability in this department, uh, with Mark. When what he does is much, much more than simply be the finance director. Mark is a part of the, our capital team. Mark helps set up vendors. Mark makes, do the payments. Mark helps us with the disbursement request, since so many of our projects are grant-funded. Uh, can you, uh, Kelsey Richards, our city engineer? You imagine following the likes of someone like Cindy Cloppenstein. I can't imagine, uh, someone doing more than Kelsey does. Every day she learns more. She takes on more responsibility. She works great with Chris. You have two engineers' minds going. Uh, I will tell you that if, if the city is successful in getting the Shildem, the grant funding for the Schildermeyer, Kelsey played a key role in that application getting done. I don't know how we would have got that submitted. And last but not least, you know, behind the scenes, what you don't see is how projects have to be advanced. Especially projects in the city of Loveland that are funded sometimes from multiple agencies, ODOT, EPA, Ohio Public Works Commission, various ODNR, uh, all of those are actually involved in, in upcoming rounds. And what you don't see is Chris is constant advancing these projects behind the scenes, working with ODOTs, working on the right-of-way acquisitions for the Love of Madeira Road. And those are critical. And also, I would think this is also, but clearly Chris is the reason other communities call us about PFOS, where we're at and where the guidance, I think, for communities are tied, all because of Chris. And I think that those are the things that I get to see. And to me, this is sort of a dream team. I know council sees it, but I get to see it every day. And it's really something pretty impressive. So moving on, I want to go over sort of, uh, what we are planning in, um, 2026. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, $7.5 million in CIP granted, obviously considerable. Some of those are, um, grant-dependent. But when you look at this, we always try to do this. We call it areas of investment. Um, we can call it whatever, but you get the, the gist. Uh, so, and you look at two of the bigger pieces of the pie there, the pedestrian improvements in Love of Madeira Road. Uh, we, a few years ago, we started including in the CIP projects that are in the development stage. So both of those are, you'll see about half, about half of those, uh, both of those are being spent on the construction of, of, of a pedestrian improvement and, uh, design of a pedestrian improvement, construction of Love of Madeira Road and design. And then of course, as you can see, we do spread around our, uh, our funding significantly. Uh, when you look at all the different pieces of the pie. And then of course, um, a big part of what the city does, and this is where Mark plays a big role in what we do every day when we, when we work on the CIP, is how, how are we funding our projects? And part of that is, um, I'm sorry, that this one over here isn't working. So a big part of that is, we look at everything. The city has, let's just say, thirty-something different funds. What we do and we work with Mark and we get, work with the engineers and everyone that's do the cost estimate, we try to ver- to spread the cost amongst the various funds, uh, is, uh, not only to spread it out, but it's, it's the proper way to do it, making sure that everyone pays their part. You may have a, a project like the road program alone has six different funds that contribute towards it. Of course, in the city of Loveland, potentially, we have $4.3 million of the, of the, of the 2026 CIP coming through grant funds. Uh, those are grant-dependent. Some of those have obviously been secured and some have not. We're still waiting on words. And actually, some were still getting ready to submit. A big, so what we, uh, and Chris and I did this, is we decided to, um, to look at, um, how we would be able to sort of do our feature projects, um, up in here. So what we looked at, what we thought was sort of four, uh, four of our feature projects that we have, uh, in 2026. And we picked those because they're...
Well, no, but you're trying to, aren't you trying to move it?
Need to advance it.
I see if it was your battery. I was just trying to help you.
Yeah. I appreciate it. I'm sorry.
Not to help.
We were trying to get creative and you have it come out of both, uh, screens, but we didn't. So I apologize for that. So, um, I can see the arrow down the corner.
No.
Cursor's moving.
Do something, chief.
Actually, what, what's this screen?
Yeah, you can probably touch it with your hand. Bottom left. Left corner.
Bottom left.
Oh, maybe not.
Chief, I think it's just because of this.
Ooh, there you go.
Be advancing for you.
Now we advanced it and didn't even want to. Oh, no.
So, we decided to look at what we thought were four of the feature projects. Then we were going to go into a little bit of a deeper dive on those, on those projects. One was, uh, Love of Madeira Road Revitalization Phase One. Second project was PFOS remediation. Third was the Oakland Road Sidewalks. And the fourth was the Annual Road Program. Chris?
Yeah, so the first one, as, uh, Mr. Kennedy spoke about, is, is our Love of Madeira Road Phase One. Um, we are to the point now where in 2026, we are going to begin construction of the sidewalks from Castle's Gate Land to the city limits. Um, first, the first phase of that, the first phase of this phase is getting the utilities moved. So as soon as we clear right-of-way, which will be at the end of this year, we will get, um, the utilities moving. Duke, Duke is going to be moving their poles, uh, basically back into the new, new right-of-way that's being acquired. And we'll be able to get, once those get out of the way, we'll be able to get the sidewalks going. Um, the sidewalks do, uh, include quite a bit of retaining wall, uh, through that, through that phase. Um, so you'll see quite a bit of work on all that. There is still, we talked, uh, probably several months ago about the, the potential of not having a mid-block crossing at the Kroger entrance. That is back in the project. Um, so we will have the mid-block crossing there at, at Kroger. Uh, we were able to get some funding or some funds moved around to make that work. And, uh, just kind of, it's, uh... It's also going to, not only will you have the safety aspect of that mid-block crossing with, with the signalization, the proper signalization, it will set us up for the future phases, uh, which will come. Obviously, we found out that Phase Two, we are funded for. So that's, that's Phase One. Um, the next slide is, um, our PFAS Water Treatment Design. As you know, we received a hundred percent funding, grant funding, uh, loan forgiveness funding on that, approximately $1.3 million. Um, we will continue the design on that all through 2026, and that will lead into 2027. Um, this is the full design of a four MGD, million gallon per day treatment plant. We are moving basically everything inside of that existing building into a new building. We're transitioning over the chlorine gas, uh, which is one of the components for our treatment. We're transitioning that into liquid, uh, liquid chlorine. It's a much safer way to do, to do the treatment process. So that'll be in there as well as the fluoride treatment. Um, as you know, through the pilots or through the, um, the initial study, we selected granular activated carbon as our treatment process. So we'll be centering all the, uh, all the improvements around that. And then the new, uh, in addition, the new treatment building will also have, uh, a new office space, control room, new lab, um, electrical room, and as I talked about, the chemical feed rooms. Um, keep in mind, we're also going to design this for future softening needs. Um, so all of the piping, all of the, um, square footage of the building will all be in place. Should we, should we be able to secure enough funding in the future to put in the water softening aspect of it? And the last aspect is the new clear well, um, that'll be designed for chlorine contact time for this treatment process.
So, uh, moving forward with, uh, pedestrian improvements, obviously, on the heels of just finishing up the, the third phase of Love of Miamiville Road, the next sort of frontier and staying within Claremont County is to pick up, uh, uh, where, uh, the sidewalks at St. Columban go and work our way, uh, in two phases. First phase is get to White Pillars. We're actually discussing, uh, some, uh, safety components. And then the second phase, we will tie into, uh, the Claremont County Park. We, Chris and I reached out to the park, uh, Claremont County Park District, that you sort of forget that that's being made and, and going on the back road. So the second phase from White Pillars to Claremont County will actually feed right into one of their trailheads. We don't really see much purpose to just keep running it out, Miami Township. It could, some point, but at some point, the next phase will actually tier into, um, into, uh, the Claremont County Parks Trailhead that'll be on that side. That will then allow, if you think about it, not only all of White Pillars, all three subdivisions connected through the Love of Miamiville Road project, but also all the students at St. Columban and LACC to be able to walk to what was going to, which is going to basically be a massive outdoor classroom. When you look at what Claremont County, uh, parks is planned, not to mention how this would do it. So now all the pieces sort of come together with this is such an important leg to get done. And we, the city will resubmit in, early in the winter, we will resubmit for safe routes to school. Um, funding, and we're not giving up on that. Uh, I think we learned a lot with our application. That will allow us to just keep chugging away at that Claremont County, uh, pedestrian master plan. Um, so this is the first phase we were able, Mark pointed out, we could use some of the state highway fund. And obviously, there's a pretty significant stormwater pipe down there that has to be replaced and expanded. Otherwise, one of the, under the theory, if you don't touch it now, you'll never touch it ever. So that we were obviously there. You see the nine percent of the total cost for stormwater. Kelsey?
Uh, the annual road program for 2026 will be from six different funds. And then with council increasing the annual road program fund, we were able to complete full subdivisions this year rather than individual streets. Um, able to complete First Street, which was an extension of the parking lot, and much-needed roadway repairs to Riverside.
Thanks. So we just felt that we wanted, Mike, I'm going to hump around on this one. We just felt like, uh, we want to do a little bit of a deeper dive on the road program. So in, uh, it was in, um, uh, it was in, uh, 2019, uh, based on a recommendation from Cindy Cloppenstein, that the city hired a company called, uh, StanTech. And they came out and analyzed the city's roads, every linear, every, uh, every inch of the city's roads, and came back with a report. And based on that report, they recommended that the city, uh, allocate $880,000 a year for, for not only a city our size, but based upon the total amount of roads that we had. At that point in time, council realized we had a lot of catching up to do. So if you look over the next X number of years, we, uh, far exceeded that, uh, that, that step. I dropped a little low. That was on me last year. I dropped a little, uh, low, the 880. And we have a backup at 880, and I would think that that will be it. Like Kelsey said, that, um, that is allowing us to go in and do full subdivisions. The first year after the budget, we, city went to 750. So I was, just did some quick math. Prior to the StanTech reports, the city averaged around $339,000 a year, that entire stretch on their, um, road program. Since that StanTech report, the city has averaged $982,821 on their road program. Since the StanTech report, the city has expended, this does not include 2026, has expended $5,999,750 on their roads. And I think that's pretty significant investment in the roads. As Kelsey said, uh, it's really making a difference. Uh, chief, if you wanted to touch on yours?
Share for 2026 is our, uh, research and, uh, funding. Last year. On off, uh, to be able to complete, before pointing out if we don't, to start, those are approved, to be as possible. 2026, you were requested to, uh, disprove, um, staying around with the, yeah, a lot of, uh, and also, we've been discussing this for quite a few years, the number of events that we have for the city, uh, like, uh, bike trail, the fact that we have, river, running to, uh, now, uh, from, uh, to cover some of these events or have, uh, unfortunately, right now, we need one to have other assets or mountains that we can call on, uh, to, uh, to, uh, stop. And then now, part of, uh, the, uh, little, uh, which, they kind of go off each other, uh, that has, uh, so, I usually think that, uh, control program, like, I talked to the chief there, that we are going to partner together. We need our ground, that's going to take one of our officers away from our event, uh, that we're going to operate our ground. So, uh, they, uh, they, uh, help us with that, or we can send, uh, our, uh, state, uh, state, uh, so, uh, collaborate, uh, on that, uh, again, uh, so, uh, so, so. So, it's been, uh, we have submitted a, uh, control program, and, uh, in a, uh, 2025, we submitted, uh, uh, uh,
Um, the, uh, LSFD submitted for the battalion vehicle that has to do with the paramedicine program and then, uh, replacement of their radios over a five-year lease. They're right at $99,000 for their CIP. Kelsey?
Uh, the city is continuing its investment in the public works campus by maintaining the fleet with the new pickup truck, um, starting Phase One of the improvements to our storage building, which is the exterior of the building. Um, the steel frame is in good condition, but the siding and the roof needs repairs. And that work that will occur will be in-house. Um, and also maintaining the focus on the protection of the city's water supply by installing the new security fence at the Union Town, or Union Cemetery at Water Tower. And, uh, besides Nisbet Park, two parks will also be improved. We will finish our plan for renovating Phillips, McCoy, and Lever Parks by, uh, searching for grant funds. Phillips Park Restroom renovations, which is grant-dependent. We'll paint the interior and exterior of the building, add new gutters, downspouts, three new picnic tables that will replace the four that are existing. Update all interior fixtures, wall partitions, entry doors, mirrors, baseboards, and add a bottle filler. And learning from McCoy pickleball courts and how quickly the courts can get alligator cracking, uh, five-year maintenance cycle will occur for the pickleball courts, which will include resurfacing.
I, I meant to add, and I didn't put it in there, uh, because it's not technically a CIP, but, uh, we've allocated funding in the water budget for the cleaning of the water towers. Uh, we'll be able to do that early in 26. Um, under the, under the, uh, uh, under the, sort of the Joe Knuxall rounding third and heading for home, we are, we're trying to get to a point here where we're getting close to wrapping up the Nisbet Park Master Plan with, uh, uh, project Chris has been working on with the, uh, the, the walking path, the adult swing, and the, um, and the amphitheater all getting ready to go. We tried to come up with what we felt was a good, uh, application. It's actually on the agenda tonight for the land water conservation to, uh, advance, uh, keep continuing, advancing towards the completion of the, uh, the, uh, Nisbet Park Master Plan. And then the next thing we have is, because, uh, obviously, land acquisition is a capital project, we're, we're waiting to hear about this, uh, uh, the, the acquisition of the Schildermeyer. That project would be roughly $1 million, grant share 750, city share 150. And then of course, we would allocate the $100,000 from Eastman Sale towards that. Inside the budget is funding for, uh, demolition, uh, structure demolition. That's not included in that. We do know that's coming, and that's allocated. Chris?
As, uh, Mr. Kennedy said, one of the things we do keep in our CIP and we identify our advancing projects through the design phase, because ultimately, these are going to end up as construction projects. Uh, but design is a huge part, huge part of any project, um, and can be upwards of 50% of the total project. Um, so two, two projects that'll continue to advance in 2026 is the Love of Madeira Road, uh, Phase Two, which is the roundabout phase. So from, uh, as we talk all the time, from Valley View to West Loveland, um, we will finish, we will complete design in 2026. Um, and we will, at the tail end of 2026, be acquiring right-of-way for the project. Um, so we will have a consultant onboard, um, where we'll, we're teaming with them and working through that. There will be in 2026, quite a bit, quite a bit of coordination of utilities. As you, as you know, this, um, this project will include the bearing of all the overhead electric and fiber and anything else that's on those poles currently. So those all are going to end up in, in trenches. Um, so there's a ton of coordination that'll be done with the utilities throughout this year, as well as coordination with business owners. Um, we, in fact, I was working today with a couple of business owners. Um, with all this electric being buried underground and with all the changes with the entrances to all the faci- all the different areas, uh, where we're trying to cut down on those curb cuts, um, we'll be working with all the business owners throughout this whole process, and that'll continue throughout 26. Um, the other project that'll advance through design, um, and get probably 75% of the way through is our State Route 48 and Butterworth Sidewalk Project. As you know, that's the project from, uh, basically from Blossom Hill, uh, down 48 up Butterworth and connecting all three subdivisions up on Butterworth. Uh, we will continue to work through, through the design and through the right-of-way, uh, process, as well as working with residents through, uh, through that acquisition throughout the year.
There are approximately 77,487 vehicles per day that travel through West Loveland Avenue and Lebanon Road intersection. Uh, there, there is a level service rating that, and it's a letter grade system, A through F, that describes traffic conditions with A being the best, which is free flow traffic, and F being the worst, which is, which is severe congestion. So level service is a result of a series of calculations that take into account roadway size and contacts related to travel, travel time, speed delay, and user comfort. And then peak hours are the busiest times of the day when the traffic is the highest. So there are usually two peak hours within the day, in the AM and the PM during, typically during rush hour. Uh, for the intersection, the AM peak hour was determined to be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. And the PM peak hour was from 4:45 to 5:45 PM. And there have been multiple traffic studies for this intersection, with the most recent being in 2019, completed by Choice One. And it provided that the total, uh, intersection level service for the AM peak hour is D, and the PM peak hour is, which was also D. Um, to help remedy the severe congestion, the yellow, flashing yellow arrow signal is recommended for the westbound turn lane. So it's coming up from, off of Lebanon Road, West Loveland, sorry, West Loveland to turn, uh, left onto Lebanon, to head south. And according to ODOT, this signal has been proven to reduce left turn crashes by up to 40% and minimize travel delays by, by providing more turning opportunities.
Um, some, some capital investments, um, they, they can't be seen necessarily, um, and, but they can't necessarily be ignored. Um, and one of those things is with our IT program with, as you know, we have a third-party velic, uh, a third-party company by the name of Velocor that helps us on our day-to-day operations. Um, but where we, where we see a need and where we see improvement necessary is in our cybersecurity stance. Um, as you know, this has become quite the topic over several, uh, several years now with different aspects of governments being affected. Uh, most recently, one that you're familiar with was the city of Middletown. Um, of note, uh, this is one thing that we, one reason why we've continued down the road with Velocor. Uh, Middletown's actually not even a client of theirs, but when they got hacked recently, they actually called Velocor in to help them out with some of their issues. Um, so with that said, we approached Velocor and we, we had been talking for over a year with them, um, as well as actually other companies about our stance currently with, with our cybersecurity. And we needed to identify our vulnerabilities. We needed to make sure we have all of our endpoints secure, which mean basically all of our users that are on our network. Um, so that includes, um, advanced training, uh, learning, as, as silly as it sounds, learning how, what not to click on, um, stuff like that, and being very vigilant with what you get. Um, that's kind of the easy side, but one of the, one of the main things that this is going to help us with is prevention. Now, some people, people have always asked, you know, can you, can you prevent any, any, any hack? No, you cannot, but you have to do everything you can to try to prevent it. Um, and we're going to be doing, as part of this program, it's called penetration testing, which is basically they, Velocor and other companies, they basically hire hackers, um, to, to go into our system and try to manipulate it and see where our vulnerabilities are. That'll be done as part of this program every six months as, um, with our system. Um, so we feel, um, even though this isn't, again, a tangible or a, a visible capital improvement, this is something we're going to invest in across the city, uh, not just here at City Hall, but with the police and with the fire. And we'll be, uh, expending approximately $95,000 over the course, of course, of 2026. And that'll be split across, uh, those multiple city funds.
So, um, the city had submitted, uh, earlier in 2025, the city submitted a fairly large Downtown Streetscape, uh, Phase One grant application to the auto department of transportation. That application was not funded. So, uh, we thought about, uh, the possibility that, in an effort to continue advancing the streetscape, we realized that we had a, a unique opportunity on North Carl Brown Way from behind Bishop's Quarter all the way to Harrison. Um, it's a very affordable proj- project. When the city widened Harrison, we already extended all of the stormwater piping. So right now, this is simply a curb and sidewalk project, and it can be done very easily and very low budget. And this will create the entire loop now with Harrison, uh, the bike trail, back down West Loveland and all of Carl Brown. So we're pretty excited. We got a really good quote on this, uh, project. We'll work, uh, Chris and I will work with each of the owners throughout the course of the winter, make sure they, sort of where do they want their curb to end, where do they want the, you know, the apron, and where do they want the sidewalk? So, and then second of all, uh, we've been talking for a while about doing a downtown business directory, uh, that we've included both of these projects, then, uh, would be in the downtown TIF. This would allow sort of that central location where, um, not only, obviously, information about each of the downtown businesses, but it, it serves as a multimedia event, uh, it's, as far as pub, access to public parking, um, myriad of items. We've been working with this company for a while. Originally, it was going to be in 25, and it got bumped. Originally it was going to be in twenty-five and it got bumped. And, uh, we think now is a good time. We have great location for, uh, to put this. But we're pretty excited about this and it's sort of interesting if you look at it, it sort of shows how the city is spending their money. Um, as we're all in and advance, you know, advancing and investing in Love Madeira Road and making some key tweaks to the downtown district to keep it going. It's, uh, it's a pretty neat thing to see if you can see that trend, how that, that is, and, uh, it's pretty exciting. Um, but again, this will be a very unique, but very affordable, uh, uh, streetscape project.
And, uh, we want to talk about a couple of other, um, smaller projects, um, although they're small in dollar amount. Um, they're kind of, um, kind of important. Um, we always talk about how the Commerce Park is, you know, in reality, our bread and butter. Um, that's what kind of keeps this city going. Um, so we've actually been talking to one of our new, um, new, uh, businesses out there, Grunder Landscaping. And they actually presented us and, and we talked through kind of sprucing up that front entrance, uh, making it look a lot more invite, uh, inviting. Um, and so there you kind of see a picture of just a, a mock-up of basically what it's going to look like here in the spring when we get that going. Um, and then in the fall, we would, we're going to be switching out some of those, some of those colors and some of those plants, uh, but we, we'll be working with Grunder Landscaping on that. And, uh, we hope to continue to invest in just the way, just the way the Commerce Park looks. Um, with, with the amount of, the amount of investment that other, the other companies are putting in, we want to put back in there too.
One of the items, there's a couple of items that you always hear about visitors, uh, to Nisbet Park. One is obviously the restrooms, uh, we're trying to address that. The other is people are not overly satisfied with the makeup of the, uh, playset. Um, one morning I was called by the mayor and she said, you really need to drive over to Madeira and see their McDonald Kroger, I believe, uh, park. I drove over there and, uh, was so impressed and I see what the mayor was seeing. Um, we're talking about a, a different level of playset. Uh, we then, uh, reached out to the city of Madeira. We, uh, found the, the architect that they used for that. We then met with that architect, Chris and I walked through that. And obviously one of the biggest features that is becoming very common in today's, uh, playsets is the turf. It is the thing that people are doing. Um, be honest with you, mulch over time really isn't allow for a playset to remain ADA accessible. It doesn't work. Um, we've long seen the disaster, what was let's shred tires. That ended up not being a great thing. Kids got dirty and at times got little steel belts in their fingers. Um, this would be a complete and total redo of the Nisbet Park. While keeping the main features, we would expand the park, put in the turf and add some key, key elements that will really top off what is, we feel is going, is one of the more significant, um, uh, projects the city's done in terms of following a master plan. So we're excited about this. We're going after some funding that is not due till the end of the year. So we're still tweaking it with the architects. Uh, these are just some rough designs that we're looking at doing and we're pretty excited about what this would do in terms of adding, really, uh, trying to, uh, factor in every age range too with this. So the last one we have was just, just the projects advancing, um, it would have looked weird to not have it in there. So I just thought we would give you a quick rundown on the project. Um, all state and federal grant funding requirements are complete. Required flood plate, floodway modeling is complete, schematic design is complete. Final design and bid documents are underway. Um, the land water and conservation, the people, uh, the agency that we got, the five hundred thousand dollar federal, uh, that, uh, tripped off, uh, as, uh, a significant amount of, uh, a different layer of federal review that we just now will just maybe over the last few weeks got through. So that now we've got our grant agreement, we're moving forward. And, and that's actually why we selected what we're selecting for the land water conservation. So I think we finished right on time with where we wanted to. Our hopes were to leave council, plenty of time to ask questions.
Mr. Ori.
Uh, several observations. Uh, first of all, on page two of our report, um, there's a key photo missing. Um, and that is, uh, Dave Kennedy. Um, you're part of that team too, and you're not recognized here. So I just thought you should be recognized for the efforts you put into it.
Try to.
Thanks.
And I'm not trying to embarrass you.
Yep.
Look up. So the other thing is, uh, Dave mentioned, uh, uh, that, uh, people, a lot of people work behind the scenes, mentioning Chris working on Love Madeira and all those others. I just have to say after eight years on city council, every project takes time.
Yeah.
It really does. And, and people need to understand, even though we're sitting here doing, not having a whole lot of conversation up here in the aisles, there's a lot of conversation that's happening. And it's doing it, we're doing it because we're trying to understand what's, why things are moving the way they are and how long it takes and all the detail that goes behind it. The other thing is, I wanted to mention was council goals. Every two years we sit down and we do these goals. And one of the goals set two years ago was connecting London. And I just have to say, we put in over forty-five hundred millennial feet of sidewalks this year, for the last two years. In the next couple of years, we've got over five thousand millennial feet of sidewalks going in. That's connecting, you know, everybody knows what we've done. All the way up Sugar Creek, uh, Steeple Chase, Huntington. We're going out to Butterworth, to Herk, Hermitage, uh, Century Hill, up to, uh, up Butterworth to connect all the subdivisions up there. I think it's just amazing how much work this, the, the goal setting in the production that we've put behind it has been a major accomplishment for the city. One final thing. On page twelve has pictures of all the other people except for Dave again. I just see it and it says questions, ask me questions. I have to make a comment that Dave Kennedy, when he gets a phone call or an email, he responds immediately to every single one of them. And I just think it's, we, we have one of the best city managers around. And I just, again, have to thank Dave for being that kind of a guy.
Well said. Anyone else? I agree. He loves that. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Biggie.
Well, first I just want to say how impressive this presentation is. I know it was a lot of work. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, each year at this time, uh, staff provides, along with council, a very, um, open view of what's going to be coming the next year. So everyone understands, residents have a chance to understand uh, where their money's going and, and what projects are, are coming up. And I do have just a, a couple of questions about some of the, uh, information. Um, Mr. Weinich, you mentioned that the first major step, excuse me, in, um, the Love and Madeira Phase One project is moving the utilities. And if I remember correctly, we had some, uh, delays because of waiting for Duke for the parking lot. So my, my first question was, and I know Duke's their own entity and we can't control them, but is there a way to try and proactively work with them to make sure that the timing of the move utilities doesn't block the ability to do the rest of the project on time?
I think the biggest thing there, and I, I believe staff has, has been doing this, um, but it's, it's keeping, the biggest thing is keeping Duke in the loop on your progress before they're ready to go. So what I'm saying there is we've had several, and this is about as much as you can do, in my opinion. As long as you keep them involved in the meetings, the progress meetings, let them know deadlines, let them know milestones. I think that's as much as you can do. I feel, I feel pretty good about this because it's, um, it's only poles being, being moved in Phase One. Um, now Phase Two, that's going to be a different story. Uh, Phase Two is going to be brutal, um, because we're going to be working hard with getting that stuff buried. Um, but it's, it's really about making sure Duke is part of all of the milestone meetings, all of our progress meetings, which they have been, and making sure we communicate with ODOT, who's running the project, that, hey, you know, make sure Duke is, and make sure Duke understands where we need to be, make sure that this is the deadline. So it's really about communication and we're trying to keep that, keep that moving at a staff level. So it's on us to make sure that happens. Um, as long as that happens, I do believe that's pretty much as much as we can do with Duke.
Right. I mean, obviously it's a major project and we don't want to see those delays, but I mean, you can just do what you can, like you said. Um, Chief, I had a question for you about the drone program. Um, you know, obviously you know, I went through Assistant Police Academy last year and there was a presentation about Milford's drone program when we were going through those classes. And it seemed to me that the training is a very substantial amount of training. Um, first of all, how many officers do you anticipate being involved?
Uh, initially we'll probably start with two, just, just to get us off the ground. There's actually a couple of different licensing that they get. I think it's our, to our benefit because of the types of events that we have and how we're going to want to utilize it. And we actually go through and get the full, uh, FAA license. Um, there's, you can get a government license, which allows you to do certain things, but the full FAA drone license actually allows us to do a little bit more. Um, so we will eventually go through, uh, ultimately comes down to operational need. So we'd like to deploy it as much as possible or have the ability to deploy as much as possible rather than having somebody called in. We'll have them on shift and have that available to them if something did happen. So, um, we have a lot of interest in the program. I, I know of at least three officers right now that, uh, have their own drones and are chomping at the bit to, uh, to go ahead and get one of the drones and, and get the FAA training. So, uh, ultimately I would say we'll probably be up to about four, um, operators that should be able to give us enough coverage that the majority of the time we would have an operator on duty. But again, because we are partnering with and collaborating with Milford, uh, we can always call on them, uh, for those times where we don't have somebody.
Okay. And obviously you mentioned that the drone, the cost of the drones would be through potential grant that you're looking into. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And how many drones would you anticipate getting initially?
So because of the cost and because of the, the, uh, what we've asked for, it's one drone, um, to get again, what we need, the multiple camera, uh, just the, you know, regular daytime camera and then a FLIR camera, uh, runtime, extra batteries, everything like that. Um, a sig, a, a drone runs, you know, in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range is where they're at. So these are not the ones that, you know, you're buying at a hobby shop. Uh, they're, they're quite a bit more. Uh, also why we want to go through the extra training, because we're going to be turning, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollar piece of equipment over to an officer to fly around. So we want to make sure that they have the best training.
Right. And I think, I think you mentioned this, but the last question I had about it is how would that affect staffing on any given time? But you're going to make sure that's taken care of through working with Milford, kind of mutual aid situation?
Correct. We have mutual grade, mutual aid agreements with every single agency around us. We can always call on them as needed as they can call on us. Uh, so if one of our officers is diverted to, uh, not operationally where they're needed for the drone, we have the ability to call somebody in and until we get that person in, we can use another agency, uh, they'll come over and assist.
Okay. And I have one more question, um, if I could. Uh, Mr. Weinich, back to, to you with, uh, PFAS. So, uh, obviously what we see in the, the CIP this year is an example of the investment that the city's making and trying to remediate the, the, uh, PFAS in our water that we all have talked about on a number of occasions. And I know you give us quarterly updates on the progress that's being made. And I appreciate the fact that obviously you need to take steps. You have to do the engineering before you can even think about any type of construction. And we're going to do the engineering this year. Um, the question I have is, we all know also through all the discussions we've had previously about the type of cost we're talking about for the actual construction. And the design phase is being covered by a grant through Ohio EPA. And obviously we're speculating a little bit, but do you have any sense yet as to what type of funding will be available to us when we do start construction?
Yeah. So I think at a minimum, um, through, through the Ohio EPA and the WSRLA program, which if you look, if you go back, this was through the, um, infrastructure bill, uh, while, uh, President Biden was still in office. This is, this is year, twenty twenty-six will be year three of the funding, which is the end of the funding for it. And what they've said is when you go to get your construction, when you go to construction, we will give you up to four million dollars in grant money. So with that said, number one, based on conversations we've had, I've had with EPA and, and even the US EPA, at a minimum, they're going to continue funding to that level. So we feel confident that there will be four million dollars in grant money. There's a lot of talks about there's going to be an increase in that. We don't know. We'll see. But there's definitely the ability for four million dollars. We're ha, we're going to have approximately, approximately two million dollars in our settlement fund. Hopefully it's a little bit more. We haven't heard what the BASF and Tyco settlements will be. But we do know between the 3M and the DuPont, it's approximately two million dollars, hopefully a little north of that. So that gets you about to six million. Um, we're obviously going to do as much value engineering as we can throughout the design prize, process. Um, as you know, at the study phase, it was around seventeen million dollars projected. Keep in mind, that's with a thirty percent contingency at that point. Um, that's typical, um, based on the level of, um, estimating that's done. So we could see that number go either way, right? But so to answer your question, I do believe there's at least six million dollars that we will be able to get in grant money. And there's going to be approximately, right now, say eleven million dollars of monies that we will have to figure out how we're going to fund that. And there are opportunities between zero percent loans throughout, through the same type of program. Um, we will have, you know, we will, I'm sure with council, have other discussions about where our WMR is. Um, you know, is there a way to put on another fee? And there's going to be discussions, I'm sure, that we'll have on how else we're going to fund it. Um, but hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Biggie.
It does. I just want to get a sense of where we're at because obviously this is about next year, but we're always looking for the future as well. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Any other comment? Yes.
Uh, just a few, uh, from me as well. First off, I just want to thank, uh, staff for putting this together. I think this is really well, uh, presented in terms of, uh, just the way that the, you know, the, the general public can, can look into this and, and glean a lot of different information. It's very data-rich, but also orienting in terms of what, what we're talking about. I think that really when you look at this holistically, it's a great example of, uh, us prioritizing and hitting on the types of things that a city must have, should have, and also nice to have. And it's all kind of put in here. And to Mr. Ori's point, how, how planned out it has been, has been a, a joy to watch. Uh, to be able to sit here and, and reflect on all of the work that has gone into this up to this point. So I, I just want to, again, uh, provide my own perspective on how appreciative, uh, I am of that. Um, one thing that came to mind, just a quick question of getting into the details on this. I s, I noticed that, you know, I really like the pie charts on the sp, on the specific, uh, large projects where you kind of show the funding source. I'm curious what constitutes, um, uh, the special project fund? What are some of the things that, that, uh, go in?
Well, the special projects is basically a bit of a pass-through. The special projects is funded with transfers from the general fund. And then Mark, it also starts the year with, it also hands our investments, correct? Yes. So it's, it's, it's a way for Mark and us to put the grant funds can go into there. And then once we know what's coming in for grant funds and what we have some funding that's already in there, then we do a transfer from the general fund to even that out almost to the dollar. And then that's as the funding comes in. So that's sort of the, uh, catch-all for the projects. It's just easier to put it all in special.
So to use your baseball analogy, it's like the on-deck circle.
Yes, the on-deck circle.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I appreciate that because I was looking to see where it would fall in and that, that explains it perfectly. So it's, it's more of a financial management and cash flow tool. Uh, another question I had was around the, the, the cybersecurity that, uh, you went over and how that reflects with some of the, uh, special projects that we're looking to put online, specifically the, the water, uh, treatment design. And i, is that the kind of thing that even though that might not be in, uh, reality? You know, we don't have that physical space. It's going to be sort of, it's being designed in simulation phase. Would that be taken into consideration with some of the cybersecurity efforts that we're looking to, uh, you know, bolster?
Ye- yes, um, but we're actually a step ahead already at, in the, on the water side. Um, we've got our, we've got, uh, We've got our, we've got segmented networks out there. So like when Ricky Gregory, our chief operator, if he's, goes on to check his email, let's say he goes on to check his email, he's actually on a different network than the water plant itself. So we've got, we've already taken steps. We are waiting, we've already, in this past year's budget, we actually, it's called a, it's basically a remote, remote access program. So if you recall, and, and a while ago, I'm sure, I don't know when, we petitioned to the Ohio EPA to bring back the number, basically cut back on the number of hours our, our chief operator has to be onsite. To do that, you have to prove that he can, he or she can monitor 24/7. So we currently do that. But we, we're looking to put in a more robust, robust remote access program. So I would say to answer your question, yes, this will take that, this will take the water side into account. But I will say the water, the water is actually a couple of steps ahead already. Based on the vulnerability and the risk assessment of the water. That's a much higher priority than, quite frankly, than our, our billing system being shut down.
Okay. All right. And then lastly, again, I think I really appreciated the, essentially the first slide where you sort of showed the timeline of how we arrive at a capital improvement program, a perennial capital improvement program. So I guess, you know, as we close the chapter on this sort of council session and the next time we'll be doing this, you know, we may have a new council goals, you know, assigned. I'm, I'm just curious if there's anything that, and obviously some of this stuff is done in phases to where, you know, we might be looking at a future phase, like Mr. Goodyear mentioned, the, the actual, you know, PFAS remediation cost to construction and implementation. Are there any other things that might not be in this document that, that may, we may see in the future as like a crystal ball?
Well, I think, I think the one you don't see because it's already been funded through this past budget. And because we're in, it's a long design period, it's Riverside Drive. You didn't see that in here because it's already been funded for this basically two years of, 18 months of design. So you didn't see that in there. You're going to, you know, obviously you've phased, phase three, as we're calling it now, since we renamed them, so they make a little more sense. Phase three of Love and Madeira, we got the funding, some, the, the 80/20, 79/21 split on that, that was just announced. So you'll see that coming into a, a future document. You're going to continue to see connectivity projects. You're never going to stop seeing that until honestly, I think the goal is to connect. So I will say in your next two-year goal setting session, you are going to have some of these carry over. It's not that you didn't make progress on them. It's just that they were more than a two-year project. So.
Right. Yeah, exactly. That's kind of what I, what I was thinking was that it doesn't, it doesn't fit into a neat two-year window. But, but I appreciate the sort of forecasting that you're able to do for us here. So thank you very much.
And then to be honest with you, you're also going to start seeing some of the larger scale water main replacement projects. We were actually, Chris and I obviously talk every day about this kind of stuff. We were actually looking forward to doing a couple extra because the WMR fund is building up for that purpose. And again, the, without the WMR fund, we would not have been able to do the last two phases of Love of Miamiville Road sidewalks. But it is important for us to figure out exactly what the city's dollar amount from a water perspective is going to be on Riverside Drive and hold on to that until we know that. Meanwhile, that fund continues to build up. Chris has worked with everyone in the water to sort of really do a deep dive on what would be the next big time, since Cherokee was probably the largest water main replacement project, at least in the recent history of the city. We're, he's planning ahead for future water mains, all of which we will have the funding to do without any kind of debt service being needed.
Yeah. Internally, we have a five-year CIP already on the water side. And I'll be, you know, it's not going to be any secret, the next project that will be funded by WMR, once we know, once we allocate to Love and Madeira and Riverside will be Rich Road. We've already identified that as our next major water main project. So we have a five-year outlook. We're looking to do, the, the goal is to do at least one large water main project in the $700,000 range per year. Next year is going to be essentially Love and Madeira because we're replacing it as part of that project. But yes, we continue to monitor that and keep that in kind of an internal five-year CIP on the water side.
Which was one of the benefits, the Oakon Road sidewalk project. There was no water main replacement that needed to be in that project.
Mr. Hart?
I know we're up against, so I will be brief. But first, thank you for, thank you to the staff for putting this together. Incredible work again, getting this presentation together. Mr. Weinich, quickly, just one more little follow-up on PFAS. I know it's a major project for the city year over, year over, year. Does it make any sense to allocate any more money to this than, than is currently allocated to this right now?
No, not for, not for 2026 because the, our design is going to be 15 to 18 months. And we just, you know, a month ago, basically got design going. So no, as far as funding for 2026, it's all design. There's nothing else we can honestly fund. We're doing all the, all the tests, the RS, the rapid small scale testing is part of it. Our isotherm testing, which is just basically another test to make sure we're selecting the right media. So as far as in 2026, no, there's no need for any other funding.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Richards, the STAN Tech report we did on the roads, when do we need to retoad, take a peek at that again? Do we have any idea when we need to relook at that number, that 880 that we've got going? Is there, is that forecasted perpetuity? Or do we have an idea of when we may need to take a peek at that again?
I would probably need to look at that report again and see how far advanced, if they kind of mentioned that report.
Typically, when they do those types of reports, they're looking, they're, they're looking to do a, every, basically they're looking at getting through all of your streets in 15 years. So in year, year 16, you should be going back and doing year, whatever you did in year one.
Okay.
That's kind of typically how they look at it.
That makes sense. The last thing I have is just, just for my, for my visual, like my, mind's eye. How far up are we burying utilities on Love and Madeira in that, in that plan?
Right. So, so we're actually going to bury utilities all the way up to Casp-. I don't want to, don't, don't quote me on that, but it's darn near close to Castle Skateland. So this, this first phase that's going to go, and we're not burying utilities.
Right.
But it's basically up till around McDonald's, Kroger, Castle Skateland, that area is where we're going to bury too. All the way from West Love.
Great. I, I appreciate it. And the level of expertise that you guys provide on all these projects and are able, it's just, it's incredible. So thank you for your work.
Mr. Ping. I know, they all talked a lot.
Thanks to the staff for, for doing this. It's, I, I went back and looked through the last one we've received before. It's, it's just amazing how much gets done with the, the group of people we have. It shows how talented they are and how dedicated they are to, to what they do. One, I'll just skip all of that. One question, Chief, on the, the surveillance. Is there going to be any need to do anything like we did with the, the flock cameras and those kinds of things? As far as the video storage off of the drones and costs that we will incur to have that stuff available for public records requests and that kind of thing? Or is that already taken care of and what we already have for the, the other, the, the body cameras and the other things we have?
It, it will be a completely separate storage system, depending on what vendor. We don't have a vendor currently identified. You know, our Axon, which is our, our body camera in car system, they do have, you know, drone. But there are a number of drone vendors out there. So there will be a storage, you know, with that. Again, we'll build that into any quotes that we get, anything that would come from that as far as, I, I believe this would be a question that Mr. Braun could answer, but I would guess that any footage that would come from that would be subject to the fee where we could recoup the cost of preparing that footage for somebody to view. So we would be actually be able to recoup some of the costs if, if we did get a number of requests for it. That would also all be hinged on if it is a, if it's even, even though it's a public document because we have it, but is it a public document that we have to release? If it's, you know, sensitive to operations or security, things like that, then that wouldn't be available. But the storage side would be part of the vendor contract that we would have.
Okay, good. Most of my other stuff's already been covered. So there's only one thing I, to, to finish up, to correct Mr. Ari's mistake. We do not have one of the best city managers. We have the best city managers.
Did you have anything, Vice Mayor?
Just observation, I think. Been 12 years here on council and I think 12 years ago, maybe we filled two or three pages with capital improvements. And we've come a long way. The city does not stand still. We're proactive. We have a great staff and I commend all of you.
Thank you. I, I would just say thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this. Mr. Kennedy knows my biggest thing I needed to learn when I was mayor is patience because I want all of this done the second we come up with the idea and staff comes up with the idea. But the way this is all laid out and you see the grant dependent, we're doing the best we can with a really pretty small city and not a whole lot of revenue. And the things we've been able to accomplish over the last several years are pretty amazing, thanks to all your efforts. So thank you, everyone. We have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
For Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.